So I'll call the meeting to order. And the first item on the agenda is the House of the Woods update. So I think that'll probably be Suzie and John.
Yes, and actually, I'm just gonna let John take over and start off with a couple months.
Okay. Well, we've had it listed. We've had it listed for about two and a half months now. Unfortunately, I'm not here to say that we have any type of an offer, written or otherwise. We've had a couple of people. A couple of people have expressed a strong interest in the property. The two parties that did express a strong interest wanted to just put a single house on there, but after viewing the property and going into a little cost on it, it was too prohibitive for the two parties that were interested. It's had client portals. This might be a little gobbledygook of real estate and MLS, but 62 client portals, client views 15. We've had 110 parties who are interested. And there were 235 emails that have been sent out on the property to interested parties and whatnot. I got a copy of the listing here if the council would like to take a look at it and of also the pictures that I took of the property when we listed it. Contrary to these pictures, they were not taken today, but there is snow on the ground. Okay, so I'm gonna change these pictures to a little more of a spring change. We settled on $190,000 at the council meeting back in January when we put it on the market, but, you know, it hasn't sold yet. Council may be interested in reducing this price at this time to get a little more, possibly a little more interest. The builder that built the property up there on 11 Mile going east of Southfield, I contacted them. They have yet to get back with me. So, and I've also contacted a number of other builders that have not expressed an interest in the property as yet, okay? But again, council, if they would consider a price reduction, it might be a benefit to the council. Also, when I was here the last time, debris and brush is still there. Now, when I say debris, it's not trash. It's fallen timber, debris, cut the lawn. Of course, you can't cut the lawn during the winter, but cut down the small trees if there's any possibility of that. Any, any type of improvement to the property as far as appearance would be of great benefit to, to sell the property. That's about my limit of presentation, if anybody has any questions.
Did you have a recommended price for reduction?
I would say to maybe bring it down to 160, 170, right in there. That would be my recommended trap. This is the, got a question from the crowd here. This is the property at 19600 Forest Drive where the mansion was. Okay.
Do you feel like the number of, you said you gave some statistics on the, oops, sorry. The number of views and emails and so forth that have gone back and forth, do you feel that's like a normal number, or do you think that number would be a lot higher?
It's about, it's about normal. I don't, I don't think it should have been higher. Obviously, the more you have, the better it is. But I think that's a normal, that would be normal. That's not unusual.
So when do you plan on, I know it is snow today. When do you plan on getting probably some more spring photos of the property?
Well, believe it or not, I was thinking of doing that today. However, we had a snowmageddon here today, so that's obviously on the question. I'll be doing that in the next couple of days. Once it's, once it's a little more, obviously no snow on the ground would be helpful.
And do you have access to a drone to get maybe like an aerial view for?
I can, that's a good suggestion. And I do have access to get a drone to get an aerial photograph.
Okay, I would love to see that possible.
Okay.
Can we approve $5,000 to clean that up? Is that what we approved that?
I think $5,000 was being about, I didn't suggest that that was.
Yeah, so and the city was supposed to do that, right?
Yeah, when, when the weather was better. You know, they were thinking of it.
That would be helpful.
I don't think we approved that.
I don't, I'm not, I'm not doubting you. You just spoke, you just spoke about it. It was not approved.
Oh, I thought, okay, I thought that was part of the plan. Don't you think that will make a big difference?
Well, I think definitely if it was cleaned up, you know, again, there's no, there's no trash on the property. This is strictly fallen timber, lawn grass, and brush. It's just overgrown with brush. If, if that stuff could be removed or cut down would be, I think would be a tremendous help.
Do you, so will we need to just use our resources, or could we like outsource that? Or will we just depend on like DPW for Lacer?
I think we probably want to see what DPW can do first. And I'll look back through the minutes. I do remember the discussion on the amount. I don't remember if it was approved or not, but I think we try DPW first and then maybe if there's some larger trees that, you know, we need to, I mean, they can only go so far, so we need to contract that.
These are, these trees I'm speaking about, these are not trees. These are weeds that have grown into a small tree. So I'm not looking, I'm not looking at taking down something that's 24 inches across. I'm looking at getting rid of brush, fallen timber, and cutting the grass. That's as far as I think you have to go.
Makes sense to me to spend $5,000 rather than dropping it $20,000 or whatever at this point. I mean, I don't know, what do you think?
I think a price reduction would help. But I think, I also think that the, that removing that debris could also help. Because one of the builders mentioned there's an awful lot of, and again, I want to stress, it's not trash. It's fallen timber and that. And one of the builders did mention that.
So just looking back at the minutes, excuse me, the motion was to list the property at 190. There was no inclusion of any expenditure to clean up. But there was a discussion about, I do recall, and I do believe the recommendation was once the weather broke was to, for the city to do that.
Do you think there are any archived photos of that property before it got overgrown?
There's no archived photos that I'm aware of. Okay, I took these photos back in January, but there's, if there's archived photos, you gotta check with the city on that.
I'm sure that's.
I do have it on there. You know, there was a little brief history of the property and that, and that is online. If someone could take a look at that, you know, if they go to the MLS, if they go to the multi-list, they can click, you know, Documents, and they can get a little brief history of the property, a little brief outline of it. But, and we do have a survey, but there, excuse me, there are no archived photos that I'm aware of.
Will we send you that list too for the listing? And I'll put it in the email slot and maybe somebody, maybe somebody will be on the email.
Okay. I did put it on the, a couple of the Lacer Village websites. And I put it on my own Facebook page. And there's a, a couple of Lacer Village Facebook pages that this was put on.
Anybody wish, any other questions?
So, so you say you spoke with, you spoke with two builders, right? That were interested in the property or?
No, these were not builders. These were private individuals who were interested in purchasing the property and building a house on it for their own purposes.
Okay, so do you have like contacts with any builders? Like that, like have you like personally just had a conversation with like?
I've contacted several builders. There's only a couple of houses that have been built in Lacer Village in the past couple of years.
Right.
Those build, a couple of those builders I have tried to contact with no avail. I think the one guy, there's the one property that's south of 11 Mile, Rainbow Circle, where they have the condos. They have eight or nine condos. I think he's out of business now, to be honest with you. He's retired, but I tried getting ahold of them to see if they would be interested in it.
Okay. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming. I just wanted to make sure that, you know, a lot of residents were asking about the property, so I just wanted to make sure we were given a proper update of what's going on.
Absolutely. And if any residents have any questions to me, they're more than welcome to give me a call.
Okay.
Okay, anything else? All right, thanks, John.
Okay, thank you.
All right, so next, next item is council meetings in the community room. So I don't know who's gonna introduce that, but.
So we talked, I think it was the last meeting about moving. What would it take to move council meetings from certainly here down to the community room? So I did have Jim Nelson, who runs our TV and does all these meetings for us. I did ask him to give us a detailed, a detailed quote, which was attached to your packet. Essentially, what we, what we're doing right now today at this very moment is $310 plus, you know, $56 for every, for every hour over two hours. And that's just the labor, that's just the labor cost. However, if we were to move it into the community room, that significantly increases the cost. Essentially, right now, we are in a TV studio, right? All the wiring is here for the audio, for the sound. It's all directly connected into, into the mixing boards and some other technical equipment that I can't remember all the names of. But essentially, we would need, need to recreate the setup here downstairs each and every time. It's not something that, because we are constantly having events downstairs, five events, it's not something that we would have permanently done. So it would be, you know, I'd have to have a, you know, a cart, which is the additional, part of that additional room set up that's on that memo. Basically like a mixing board cart that would take it down, set everything up, tear it down, bring it all back up. And so, and, and the cost that is in here, so that, that cost is $1,175 plus it would be $82 for every hour over, because there would be two camera operators in that instance. That does not include Zoom either. So if we were to move it down into the community room, it would just be an in-person meeting. There would not be a high-risk setup for, for attendees to Zoom in. That would, I mean, that would be some additional equipment that we would also need to purchase to make that happen. So all told, like the initial setup cost, our initial payment would be probably about $2,400. But then, yeah, it's roughly, let's just for sake of discussion, $1,200 every month or twice a month. So $1,200 for each meeting.
So the, so the additional equipment setup, the $1,000?
Yes.
Is that, you don't actually have that included in the estimated $2,400?
No.
Or you add that in? So it would be 34?
It would, uh, no, the, well.
That's just, that's on one-time fee, right?
Yes.
Okay.
The $1,000 additional equipment is just the one-time fee. And that's really that equipment part, for lack of a better phrase.
Right.
But yeah, the estimated monthly cost is about $2,400.
And then, oh, and then the Zoom setup, that's?
I don't have, I don't have a cost for that.
Okay, 'cause on here, it says $1,175, so I'm curious. Or is that?
That is, yeah, that would just, that's, that obviously does not include the Zoom. I think it'd probably be at least another $300, $500 for the equipment that would allow us to do Zoom downstairs as well. And I think you could, that would, so that would bring that additional equipment cost to probably $1,500. So that would be one-time fee, but.
Right.
And there's no charge for Zoom up here? What's the, like, doesn't look like we're comparing apples to apples.
The equipment that we, we already have equipment up here, like that, sorry, that cost has already been kind of rolled into the budget that's already been expended. So that was, it was not factored into it, right?
Okay, but, so we're not really getting a true cost of what this meeting costs at?
This meeting is $310. That, and that's because we already have all of the equipment up here, right? So that's really, when it's set up, it's staff labor time.
So it doesn't have to be set up each time downstairs?
Okay, so, but you said this wouldn't include Zoom? It would just be a meeting downstairs? And it would be, we would just have a meeting that would be recorded and then played later? Or what, what would, what would happen?
Yes, it would just be recorded and broadcast later. We would still have, you know, we have our Facebook Live camera, right? So this camera would be used, but then it would be recorded and, recorded and edited and broadcast later.
Okay, but, 'cause there were two cameras at Breakfast with the Bunny, so what's the, what would be the difference with that?
I can explain about the Breakfast with the Bunny. There was no cost for the Breakfast with Bunny for the camera operators that were there. Jim Nelson, who does our TV station and that, he was taking live photos. He also had two other gentlemen there that he was training. And there was no cost to us for that. And the Breakfast with the Bunny is part of his salary fees that he gets monthly. So there was no additional cost for three operators there. I was gonna explain that on the Breakfast with the Bunny, 'cause I had heard a lot about three operators there. But that's the reason they were there is 'cause they were in training.
Yeah, and I think, if I'm, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think the, the difference with that, with an event recording versus a council recording is those aren't being broadcast. So those are being recorded, you know, just to a static drive as opposed to these that are being processed and recorded that comes through at the studio.
All right, so we're paying this month $5,000, or last month, $5,191.96 to CB Studios. What does that include?
I would have to go back and look at the contract. Jim might know.
I'm just wondering if there's anything that we can rearrange to, you know, make this, make this happen. Have you guys considered moving up here to give more room out here or no?
Well, they did move up. They did move up and they gave room.
We just, they might sit right atop of you, right? We might move up here in the empty seats.
I think it's important if the three of us are all together. You know, I mean, there's just not enough space up there, so.
So then what do you guys suggest that we do to give more access to residents? 'Cause that, 'cause that's the issue. The issue is that there really isn't room for residents. The meeting room is not a good setup. The sound is bad, the interaction is, you know, it's, it just isn't good. I've heard a lot of complaints from people that have been in that room. So, you know, it's important, important that we have something for our residents. So if, you know, if this is cost prohibitive, then what do you, what do you guys suggest that we do to, to make it more user-friendly for residents?
Well, I would, I would actually ask what your suggestions may be. I mean, one of the things that, I mean, one of the reasons that we're, we still have Zoom is because I pushed for it, because we have, what, four? At least four attendees. I mean, typically, we have, we have participants in, in Zoom platform. And so when we had the opportunity to just, you know, when we came back in person, we had the opportunity to drop it. And I think it's important that we keep it, because people are engaged. They do appreciate being able to hop onto Zoom or, you know, not, for whatever, for whatever their circumstance may be. Maybe they're not able to come in, maybe they're elsewhere. So I think Zoom's the option. But I would look for council to provide us some additional suggestions that they think might work.
I think Barb did that last time. And I think we had 20 people in the meeting room a couple of meetings ago. So, you know, again, we're, we're supposed to be here for residents and have heard a lot of complaints from people when campaigning and, and still that people want to be able to have face-to-face access. So, I mean, it's, it's very different. Even when it's in the room next door, the sound is delayed and it's just, you know, it's just not a, not a good setup.
So is this, so is this not adequate enough room for the, what I've seen? The residents who are showing up, they've been able to fit in this room. Looks like the administration has moved up. They can move up even closer if need be. But I just don't see as of now, what's the need for five people to be in the community room? And it's, it looks like we're adapting well. I mean, to be spending $35, $3,400, I mean, it's not like.
$3,400, where'd you get that?
Well, $2,400 a month for, you know, five, it seems like we're catering to everyone. There's more room that people can fit in the room as of now. I think, like, they don't have to sit in there anymore. They're sitting in here.
This is a study session too, so we might have more people later. I don't know.
Yeah, so I would kind of build on that. I mean, I do think there are things that we can do right now to make this room a little bit more accessible. Like the cameras are over here. We can move these tables all the way over and have, probably get 15, 20 chairs over, over there, where it would be, be more accessible. But to Jalen's point, you know, people are riled up right now. And so there are, there's attendance in the meetings. But, you know, Kelly, Kelly, you can, you've been on council for 10 years, so you can, you can add this, 11 years. I, I've been on for five, and most of our meetings average like three or four people. Again, people are riled up right now. I think that's gonna, gonna settle down. Hopefully, we still continue to have that, that amount of participation, because we want the participation. But until we see that on a sustained basis, you know, I kind of agree with Jalen. I don't think it makes sense to spend 25, or 2,500 times, yeah, almost, almost $30,000 in a year for, for something that we don't know is gonna be, is gonna be sustained, the number of people.
Well, then, the thought occurs to me too. I mean, it's relatively short-lived that this particular table will be here.
Right, right.
Right? Based on the schedule, I mean, there should be a permanent city administrator on hire by the end of June. And typically, typically, the city administrator sits right at the appointment. So, I, you know, I, this is an interim, the interim table for the interim. So I, you know, I think once the removal of this table is, you know, this table's gone, there will be plenty of additional room, so.
I would like residents to please reach out to us to let, let us know what it is that you would like to be able to participate in the meetings. 'Cause I've heard a lot of complaints, so, you know, if any, if anyone's watching at this point, you know, please, please let us know. Let us know what, what it is that you would like us to do.
So what are some of, have you heard any of the complaints? Like, so we could, or we could know?
What do you mean? I just told you the.
You said the residents, I was just asking, like, could we know what, what's the actual complaint? So we could start working on, working towards it.
The meeting room is an issue with sound and with delayed sound and the picture and noise in the room. Those were the things that I had heard. And then, you know, there's not a whole lot of room in here right now, but this is better. Again, it's not, I mean, I don't think it's up to us. We're, we're sitting up here with plenty of room, so.
Well, we can talk to Jim about the sound. I mean, the other room does add plenty of space for, I think we'd probably fit at least 30 or 40 people in there. So if, if really the sound is the issue, then we can address that with Jim and see if we can get that corrected. And that should be a minimal cost to do that.
Didn't Jim say that he corrected it from last week anyway?
Yeah, that was a different issue.
There he comes.
Oh, he's glad to tell you.
I did want to mention something about the sound. After it was mentioned, I went in there during the meeting.
Please come to the microphone.
I thought it was gonna be, I thought we were gonna get out of here quick, though.
Don't forget, you gotta speak into the mic.
How close?
Don't pretend to eat it.
Okay, the problem with the sound in the conference room is that the volume was down. I went with a remote control and I turned up the volume and listened to it. It's very clear. As far as the delay, yes, there's a six-second, three-second delay. Zoom has to come up and come back in again. And the sound goes in directly. You'll have a delay. And then you have the, the meeting room itself, which is a lot of room in there. And I've been doing meetings here for, as an engineer, for a lot of years. And if, once we have a city administrator here and this table's gone, I mean, I'm talking about 10 years, there was never, not enough room in this room, period. The whole thing with the overflow and have those other two rooms wired up was because of the, you know, the pandemic with everything that was going on with that. But as far as the sound quality, I just simply had to turn the volume up.
Oh, okay.
If you have any other questions, I'm right here right now.
Okay. No, and then the other piece was the face-to-face contact. When people are removed, then they don't get, you know, if they're angry or whatever, we don't, we don't see anything. We don't, you know, people just have to come in one by one. And so, you know, that was, that was an issue too.
Okay.
But.
Yeah, as far, as far as.
If you fix the sound, that's great.
As far as the budget, any questions on budget?
Yes, what, the $5,191.96 that we're paying for.
I don't, I don't have, I don't have. Some of it was we're buying batteries.
Oh.
We're buying, that, the equipment batteries go in there. Our UPS has died. I was buying batteries for that. Bought a cart, some of that is some new equipment. And it's the fact that we're doing, it used to be that we're doing the Zoom meetings. And I was editing the Zoom meetings at no cost. That was part of the contract. Now, the six meetings of one, two, yeah, the five meetings a month are now down live. And I have to hire camera operators, et cetera. So that's an additional expense that when it was editing only, just didn't happen.
What are the five meetings a month?
Well, the two meetings tonight.
Oh, okay.
Planning Commission and then the, the DDA. So, yeah, we're, you know, we're hiring people. There's, there's, there's labor involved. The editing is still free. So I do the editing and then I'll upload it to, to YouTube. So, you know, so it's published at YouTube. And it's done as quickly as possible, usually within 24 hours. But now that we're going live, this is just within the last couple of months.
Yeah.
That has raised the price. And the fact that in the last couple of months, I've been buying equipment to replace things. Batteries unfortunately are very expensive. Little tiny, they're lead-acid batteries, like little motorcycle batteries, but they're not cheap, so.
So how does that work? Is it your equipment and we?
No, the equipment, basically, the equipment here, it belongs to the city. There's equipment that I use because the city can't afford to buy it. I won't go into detail. Some of the equipment here is mine.
Okay.
I, when I, when it's used by the city, the city uses it at no charge.
Okay.
So there's no charge for that. But yes, some of the equipment's mine. 90% of what you see in the, in there is the city's. We're very fortunate. We got the cameras. If we go out, like to do a concert, we have all the equipment necessary to do a concert, for instance. But going downstairs, instead of having, and Suzie put it, put it together very well, we have a complete TV station right here. Downstairs, you have four walls with four speakers. And you're starting from scratch. And if you're gonna go, we're talking about, you know, going to the Zoom, we had to decide, the design has been done. Where you're gonna put the, where is the recorder for the Zoom gonna be? My initial design was, what, put it in the kitchen? Will it even work there? So as far as how much it's gonna cost to wire up the Zoom equipment every month, until we know where the equipment's gonna be and whether we can put the wires, you know, up in the ceiling maybe, like we've done here. We have ceiling, I have wires in the ceiling. I have wires through the walls. We have wires everywhere, which is good, because we want to hook up. We just walk in, we just pick up the wires that are sitting on the floor and plug. Downstairs, it's literally four loudspeakers. That's all that's down there. So until it's, the design's actually done to exactly where everything's gonna be, that exact figure, it's not gonna be, it's not gonna be tremendous. I figure maybe a couple hundred dollars maybe to wire Zoom in. But it depends where Zoom gonna be. If Zoom's gonna be in the main office, then we have to send crazy wiring, crazy amplifiers. It's a different story, so. The Zoom's important, plus we run, I send Facebook up. And the Facebook, sometimes we have more people on Facebook. Like, we had. Facebook. Like, we had a, a lot of times we'll have three or four people on Zoom, and going up to twelve people on Facebook's not unusual. So Face, the Facebook is always running up as well. And the Facebook is a camera that Cheryl came up with the money for, and that the Facebook is at no charge, we just plug it in and say it's time for you to, you know, to go up, go upstream with it.
But it's that interactive piece with Zoom that would be-
We have, we're doing, uploading to Zoom, and we're uploading to Facebook, both right now.
Okay.
Now, the other thing we can do too, and we're not doing it right now, is that with the main TV station being up here, we could also stream to AT&T, Comcast, we can also go to AT&T, stream them live. If we go downstairs, forget it, we can't do that. That's like a whole another thing, another set of amplifiers, another set of cables. It's just an empty bare room. Well, this room is very, if you were a TV person, you feel very comfortable up here compared to being downstairs. I'm glad you're smiling, because that's, that's important.
I know, there, there was a TV studio at the high school and-
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah. Yeah, I was able to do the, the, the football game when it was here. And then we had ninety-one cameras. So after ninety-one cameras, it's pretty simple. But as far as, if you wanted to do anything, after ninety-one cameras, there isn't anything I can't do and help you with making sure everything's done properly. But I think for any overflow, I think, again, Suzie's right, once these are gone, we're not gonna have that many people, you're gonna be using those rooms. But the audio's better, then you have both rooms, so. I'm reiterating myself, if there's any other questions. Now, you have me sitting down with her, which I did want to do. I was thinking about this morning, I wonder if I'm gonna have to sit down and talk to these females, so. That was right.
Thank you for answering those questions.
Okay.
Thank you, we're telling you how this works.
I learned, I wanted to pass it along.
How many times have we done that?
Um, any other discussion around the council meetings and the community room?
So, I'm, I'm glad we got the actual cost for it, but I'm hoping we could possibly maybe continue the conversation and not necessarily vote on it tonight, because clearly, there's a lot of things that, you know, we just learned about. So, maybe we could, like, just keep the conversation fluid and not necessarily vote on it tonight, or, you know, bring it back for discussion later, table it.
Can I say something? I was just gonna say, I know when council meetings, when there was a confrontational issue or a big issue, they would move to the community room, but that's the only time, and I've been here twenty-one and a half years, and that's the only time we would go down there. But that was for cer, special circumstances, when there was big meetings.
Yeah. And that was pre-COVID too, so, you know, people like to spread out a little bit more now, that's-
But I just wanted to-
Yeah.
Say that that has, that's how it used to be for the big meetings.
Those were taped, though. I believe those were taped and then rebroadcast, they weren't live. Nothing was live at that point.
Um, so, you want to, I guess, when we get to that point?
When we get to the, the action item, just table it.
Okay. Discussion item C, Tower Lease Buyout Discussion.
Really, I just want to keep this on your radar and up for discussion. Essentially, there's two choices, right there. It's-
Five.
You can talk about extra choices, and I'm going with memo. So there's two choices outlined as memo, and, which is essentially first, decide whether or not you want to carry on with the lease, or you want to entertain the buyout. I mean, that's, that's step one. And then, from there, kind of just dove, dove into, you know, your other decisions. You know, do you want to go with the, you choose to go with buyout, do you want to go with American Tower, Tower Point, somebody else? You know, if you want to carry on with the lease, do you want to keep the lease as is? Do you want to agree to the terms they've provided you? Do you want to negotiate something totally different? And I'm getting some counsel and answer that there may be some other options I didn't detail there. So really, this is, again, just to keep the discussion moving. I'd like to, we'd like to see some sort of decision soonish, so we can communicate that to American Tower representatives, so.
Yeah, so, I, I spent a lot of time on this last week. Actually, the first thing I did, got really excited, because I, I have a friend who's a PhD statistician over at U of M, and I kind of threw the problem of, you know, the, of the issue of, you know, monthly payments versus a one lump sum payment, in which one makes the most sense, and kind of gave him the whole history, and he thought about it for about ten seconds, and he says, if you've got a one-point-six-million-dollar offer, take it. And he says, you guys are thinking about it wrong, because, he said, the way you should be thinking about it is you take that one-point-six-million dollars, turn it into an endowment, and put it in a, a fund where, you know, you're, that historically averages about five percent or more in interest, and what happens then is you get rid of all your risk of, you know, people, of vendors leaving the tower, and at the same time, you replace your eighty-thousand-dollar a year income that we get, because five percent of one-point-six-million dollars is, is eighty-thousand. So we keep our, get rid of the risk, keep the same amount of, of, of income.
Aren't we getting about a hundred thousand?
Well, on the two towers.
On the two towers, yeah. And, you know, so I was really excited about that and thought, oh, well, that's, you know, maybe we are thinking about it the wrong way. But, and then we would grow the endowment on anything over five, five percent. So, so then I was talking to Pam a little bit, and it suddenly dawned on me that we are a municipality, so we don't, we can't take, you know, the same kind of risks that the rest of us can take. So we've got to, you know, our, our investment strategy is a, is a much, much more conservative investment strategy that typically has lower returns. So, for example, the Oakland County Fund, where, where is, would be a prime candidate for us to invest in, you know, they average less than two percent, so that, that wouldn't work. So I was really deflated on that. But, but then I watched the, the meeting from last week, or two weeks ago, when I, when I couldn't get, the one I couldn't get to. And the piece that, that the city attorney mentioned in that meeting that we were not aware of, which is the, the fact that there was a, when the tower was moved in two thousand and six, there was a twenty-year extension added to the lease. So the lease doesn't expire in next February of twenty-twenty-three, like we've been operating under that assumption, it expires in twenty forty-three.
Right.
That's a key piece of information, because both this council and the last council, this last council was dealing with the same issue as well. We've been laboring under the assumption that the lease, the lease ends in February, and, you know, okay, so American Tower is giving us these two options, and we've got to start negotiating to do one of these two, when, when in fact, we don't have to do anything. And what AMT is trying to do, American Tower is trying to do, is, and this is, you know, if you read the, the letter that I forwarded at the last meeting from Monrovia, that, that city that's facing kind of the same issue that we're facing, they're doing this, the same thing there, they're doing it all across the country, where they're trying to reduce their, their lease payments to improve, increase their profit. So basically, they're in the business of getting a large check from companies like T-Mobile and AT&T and Dish, and then passing on a much, much smaller check to us. So the more that they can lower their lease payment to us, the more, more profit they make. So they're trying to entice us with this offer, you know, this, this two-pronged offer, to say, we don't, we don't like, they're, they're basically renegotiating the lease, is what they're doing. So, our lease says that in February, the lease payment that they're gonna have to pay to us goes up by twenty-five percent. They want to lower that term escalator to ten percent. Okay, so, and, and what they're trying to do is to, to entice us to agree to that. They're saying, all right, well, we'll give you fifteen hundred dollars in, in, in signing bonus, but what we'll really do is we'll add fifteen years to the end of the lease. And that, on the surface, seems great, okay, we'll get payments for fifteen more years. But the thing is, is with all of these leases, these leases are set up so that the, the tower company and the carriers have all the power, because they can cancel the lease with a thirty days' notice at any, any time. So that fifteen years doesn't really buy us anything, it's not really an enticement. And the fifteen hundred dollars really doesn't do anything either, because if we, if we were to agree to the, the ten percent term escalator in, in year one, so starting in February, we would lose sixteen hundred dollars relative to the twenty-five percent. And then in year two, three, four, and five, we'd lose thirty-one hundred, because we wouldn't be getting that fifteen hundred dollars to offset the, the lower term escalator. And then that amount that we lose will grow every five years. So-
We don't have to accept that. We don't have to accept it, though.
Right, that's what I'm saying. So, 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 so really, we have other options. So, one option is, is that we can just ignore them and say, thanks for your offer, we're not, we're not doing anything. And then in February, you know, this, this goes up, the term escalator goes into effect at twenty-five percent, and we get an extra fifty-two hundred dollars a year. The only risk of that is, is that, you know, could they, you know, say, all right, well, we're gonna walk. And as, as Patrick Gosman, the consultant that we brought in, said, that's unlikely. He actually called me last, end of last week to check in, and I, I ran that by him, and, and his first statement was, well, there's zero, zero chance that they're gonna pull out. If you, you know, go tell them you're, you're just gonna keep the term escalator at twenty-five percent. And then he kind of hemmed and hawed a little bit, he's, okay, well, there's a little chance, but there's very, very little chance that that's gonna happen. And the way he explained it was, the way these towers are set up is, is, the, the network is set up so that there's, that there's overlap between towers and no gaps between towers. And so for them to pick up and move the tower is extremely difficult, because that's gonna have a cascading effect to all the other towers. So they don't have a lot of options to, to, to move it, and, and especially in our area, because if they wanted to move that tower, one, they couldn't move it very far, and two, they more than likely have to move it into a residential area, which would never work. And there's the, a, a massive expense for them to do that and lost revenue, because they lose revenue while the tower's, tower's not up. And some of those vendors may, or those carriers may, may go, may go elsewhere. So it's a very, very small risk that, that they would actually walk. But then the other thing we can do is we can negotiate with them. I mean, if we're worried as a council that, you know, that there is a possibility that they, they may walk, we can, we can go to them and say, all right, well, you want to renegotiate, you know, you guys want twenty-five percent, I'm sorry, they want ten percent, we're at twenty-five percent now, let's meet in the middle at eighteen percent or something like that. So that's an option that we can do as well. And then, and then we have the, the three options that, that are on the table, which is, which is go month to month, or, you know, or do a buyout. And I actually, actually put together a table just to help us think about, about that, that possibility, if we, if we did want to consider, you know, a ten percent month to month or, or buying out. And at the top here, this, this just gives us a sense, you can give them a copy too. So, so up at the top here, this is, this is what happens if we go to a ten percent term reduction starting in February. So we'll be dropping from twenty-five to ten percent. So, this factors in every five years that we'll, we'll have a bump of ten percent. And so you'll see, for example, at twenty years out, we're gonna have about two-point-one million dollars in revenue that we'll get. Twenty-five years out, it goes up to about two-point-eight million, I'm looking at the total line. Thirty years, it goes to about three-point-five million. And then below that, just for comparison, I showed what, what's gonna happen if we were to just say, let's, let's stay with the twenty-five percent term escalator. So you'll see after twenty years, we, we pull in just about three million dollars, so almost about nine-hundred thousand dollars more than, than the, than the ten percent term, term escalator. But the, but the, the one thing I wanted to also do, because this is what I was grappling with when, when I thought we only had two options, was, you know, which one makes more sense. So, so the one thing we would have to see, we have an offer of one-point-six million, that's the, the biggest buyout offer that we have. And, and obviously, we need to get a sense of what that money would be worth in the future. So if, if, you know, if I offer Kelly one-point-six, I'll give you one-point-six million dollars now, or I'll give it to you in twenty years, she's gonna take it now, because that's gonna buy a lot more than it's gonna buy in twenty years. So the question is, is what does that one-point-six-million dollars worth in twenty years from now? It's probably somewhere about two-point-five million or something like that. So at the bottom, just, just, just for, to kind of get the thought process going, I showed the value of one-point-six-million dollars going out in, in various year increments. So, the one that's probably the most important is the, is the, the third line with two-and-a-quarter percent annual inflation. On the backside of this page, it shows the, the average inflation rate for each year for the last twenty years, so it averages out over the twenty years to about two-and-a-quarter percent. So, you know, in, in twenty years, you know, that one-point-six-million dollars is gonna be worth about two-point-five million. So we'd be doing a little bit better after twenty years, but at, at twenty-five years, it's worth two-point-seven million, so we kind of, kind of break even. So again, it'd be a question of, you know, how long is this tower gonna be viable? But it, it gives, it gives us the ability to at least get a sense of, of what that one lump sum offer would, how that would compare to taking monthly payments for, for twenty years, twenty-five years, thirty years, and so on. So, it looks like we really, I mean, to me, it was hearing what Scott said at the last meeting about the, the, the new lease, or the extension of the lease, not, having not known that for the last two and a half years, that really changes the thinking about it. And, I mean, you know, I've been pinballing all over the place for the last two years, but it really seems like, you know, we should either, and my, my thought is that we should either, either do nothing and just continue on where, the way we're going, because that's the lease that they're under, and that's the lease that they signed, or if we feel like there's some risk, we should negotiate with them, but not drop it down to ten percent, you know, drop it down to twenty percent or eighteen percent or something like that, so.
So what's, what, if they decide to walk, then will we just start having conversations with, like, Tower Alliance, or, like, how would that work?
Well, I mean, if they, if they walk, there'd be no, I mean, the tower would, those carriers would, would be gone too, right?
I have a feeling we would be getting a couple phone calls. I mean, Horvath Tower was the one that wanted to put here. If that spot became open, I think it's a desirable location. For the reason you stated earlier, that there's already a, a high demand in this area for, for usage, only getting higher, and to remove a, a critical tower is not a smart business plan. I'm sure, I'm sure they, they are well aware of that, as, as well are other providers, that, you know, tower providers. So I think if one became vacant that was previously approved, because that's the other big issue, is getting, you know, the city's gone through this in twenty-seventeen with the, twenty-seventeen or eighteen, where they were trying to put it here on City Hall property, and they didn't get approval for it. So, for, at the planning commission level. So, that's, there's definitely a desire for this area, and I think if they were to leave for some reason, I think there'd be no, no absence of successors lining up for that, for that location.
Well, and the fact that Tower Point is offering us one-point-six million, they're not just doing it out of the goodness of their heart, because they want to be generous to us. They're, they are expecting to make money from the tower, so I think we need to keep that in mind.
Well, we need to, we need to keep talking about it, like, we need to come to some kind of-
Consensus.
Consensus, like, what is everyone, so let's, like, I think we need to break down the three questions and literally, like, agree or agree to disagree today. Like, we can't continue to say, you know, talk, like, Bruce, you give us a synopsis and then we keep moving forward. Like, we have to figure it out. Even though, the lease doesn't end until twenty forty-three, we need to do something.
Well, my, my personal preference, as I said, is one of those two options, either, you know, say, thanks for your offer, we'll stay on the way we are, or, or consider, you know, if council is, is a little bit more risk averse to, you know, negotiate with them to bring it down a little bit, but not mu, but not much. Not, certainly not to ten percent. Because I think all we're doing by bringing it down to ten percent is taking money out, out of our pocket and putting money in their pocket.
I think we leave it alone.
So you're saying, leave it alone, do you, but are we negotiating as well?
No, we don't have to negotiate anything.
Yeah, we, we don't have to. And that, that, that's, that's the whole thing. I mean, you know, you know, we've been working on this for two and a half years, and I've been under the assumption the whole time until the last meeting, that the lease was ending in February, and so that we had to do something. But they're under lease'd us for another, another twenty years. So, I mean, the lease is the lease, so they're, you know, they're, they're, they're on the hook for twenty-five percent to us.
So we can just, so, so we can just let it go, let them agree to the twenty-five percent increase and just call it a day, and just keep moving forward?
Yeah, that's, that's operation of, of the lease agreement, the twenty-five percent. But that's not a negotiating point. I mean, that's what it is right now.
Right.
For this renewal, so. If, if you, if the city wanted to engage in discussions with them about potentially lowering that in exchange for some get longer-term guarantees or something along those lines, that's what, that's what Bruce is suggesting.
Yeah, I mean, of, of course, that, that doesn't make sense to lower, lower it. So, but I mean, there, but there's possibility that they could still ask to, you know, possibly talk to us about it, though.
Yeah, I mean-
But we can still just say- But we can still just say, no, it is what it is.
The risk, and like Bruce is saying, that it's, albeit a, a small amount of risk. You know, they could potentially go somewhere else or try to find somewhere else or leave the city entirely if they, if they can't meet the terms of the agreement. The only thing the city would be entitled to at that point is, under the terms of the agreement, they have a six-month buyout. And then they've got ninety days to remove their equipment from the site. And they have to pay the monthly rate while they're in the process. So if it took them ninety days to take the tower down, they, they would owe the city nine months' worth of rental payments, so.
Okay. So we're not inflicted at all during that entire process, so that's good to know.
Yeah, I mean, the city's, the city's in a very strong bargaining position with them right now.
So I think we can come to a general consensus that we should just leave the contract as is and let it rise to twenty-five percent.
Do we have to decide that at the meeting?
Well, well, we're not, we're, we're not.
The meeting is in place.
Yeah, and it's not actually, it's not a voting, it's not an action matter at the moment.
No, it's not an action item, but obviously, you know, it's amend.
It is action request. Oh, no, sorry.
It's on the agenda.
Is it?
No, you're right, it's not.
It's not.
Nope, it's not.
It's not an action item. It's on the study session. It's the study session.
So, I mean, if,
I was thinking of the, uh, community issue.
If you are all, um, in general agreement now, um, on how you'd like to proceed, I would recommend amending the agenda, um, the regular, uh, meeting agenda and add it, add it as an action item.
Okay, so, but before we add it as an action item, does anyone have like any more questions? Are you still reserved about it? No, I don't know, okay.
I mean, it'll be interesting too, if, you know, if we, if we go back to them and say, you know, thanks for your offer. It'll be interesting to see if they, they come up with a counter offer. Not, not that we would have to take it, but it'd be interesting to see how badly, you know, that, that would be an indication of how badly they, or how, how much they value that tower and, and indication of, of the, the fact that there's an extremely low likelihood that they would walk.
So, so can we amend the, um, the agenda then and add it to?
You have to start it up.
Okay, yeah, let's do that then.
What, yes, me answer it, yes, you can.
Okay.
Um, next up is discussion item D, which is Breakfast with the Bunny budget summary.
I just, um, put together a real quick budget summary of what the breakfast was, the Breakfast with the Bunny was. It was a good event. We did, um, only have, well, we brought in revenue of two hundred and eighty dollars for the, um, children and their parents that were there. Our expenditures to get altogether were nine hundred and two dollars and eighty-one cents. So there was a loss with the Breakfast with the Bunny of six hundred and twenty-two dollars and eighty-one cents. Most of our events that we do have with the city, we do have some kind of a loss because we are using residents', um, tax dollars because they want the events. So we put those events on and we don't always break even with the events that we do put on. So I just wanted to bring that to everybody's attention. Um, and I did wanna thank, um, Councilwoman Miller. She did donate some to the Breakfast with the Bunny, so I just wanted to thank her for that too.
Unless there are any questions I should ask.
I wanna thank Barb for making it happen, Barb. Barb Canes, thank you. And we did only have about four days to advertise it, so I think things would have been, uh, would have had a better turnout if we had had a little more time to put it out there.
Does anyone else, um, for the summary?
No, I just have to say that it was a, it was a four-day event, but we did have some issues with our bunny suit being in the basement. And we did have some problems in the basement where we cannot get to anything down there. So that's why it almost, well, it really was gonna be canceled because of that. So, but it was put together in four days.
Thank you.
Yeah, I just wanna say good things. I think it was a great event. I went to it, it was, it's good, if not better than, than, than past events. And as they said, you know, it was, it was a great job by, by Karen and Barb for, for pulling that off. But I did wanna talk a little bit about, um, the way this, this was implemented and it was rushed. And, and a lot of the protocols and procedures were, were very confusing. You know, it was, it was announced via a personal account on Facebook and sites that, that, you know, the city administrator, or the city attorney has advised us not to participate on. You know, council people were taking registrations, um, collecting personal information. You know, there were a lot of, a lot of very confusing things about this. And I know when it was announced, um, I, I had a lot of contacts where people were wondering whether or not it was a private, whether it was a city event that has now become a private event. And I know Kelly got the, the, the same response when we talked that night. And then, um, you know, the, the city administrator, you know, who is ultimately responsible, or city administrators in this case, who are ultimately responsible for, for this event. You know, Suzie, um, you know, sent a professionally written email with some basic questions about the, about the event. You know, that, that any host of an event, you know, should be expected to answer. You know, very, very simple questions like, you know, what, what's the desired room setup? How many attendees? Who's contact information? And I know, she had about, about a dozen questions in this email. And I know Kelly and I, when we talked, we had additional questions like the budget and whether or not someone was, who would say certified and all that. But the long and the short of it was, she, she sent a, 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 an email to Karen, um, about, with, with those questions, you know, doing the due diligence that the, the city administrator should do. And, and the response that Suzie received was, was absolutely jaw-dropping.
Well, I'm going into the next, next, are we going to E now? Council staff relations?
I'm just talking about Bunny.
Well, I, I would, would Barb, Barb met with, with Pam three times, right Barb? She, she talked to Pam and Suzie about it two weeks before the event happened, so.
She was in the middle of talking something, saying something. So anyhow.
Well, you're, are you gonna read the email that I, that I sent?
No, actually I'm not.
Oh, okay.
I, I, I know that that email has been FOIA'd and I, I think there are people who are gonna discuss it later. But I do wanna point out two sentences that were in that email. The first one was, again, this was Karen, this was
Bruce, this really is unnecessary.
Okay, so, um, so you can let him finish?
And not appro, it's not appropriate. I'm sorry, it is not appropriate.
It's, we're not doing this tonight. Finish that, you can come back with your rebuttal. Because the appropriateness of our meetings seem to kinda just go with what is good for the evening. So he can finish and then you can finish. That's just fair. And I see you Ian, and when we get to, um, public comments, then we will call on you. But I am acknowledging, please go ahead.
And I'm not, not gonna stick up for the city staff. So there was a sentence in there from, from Karen to Suzie, said, we made an executive decision as we are your bosses, that we were gonna put the word out. So I posted, posted it on Facebook last night. It's not a city executive, the decision was not theirs to make. They are not, Karen is not the boss of those city administrators. We as council are the boss of, of the city administrators. One individual council member does not get to make decisions for the entire council. And then it was put out on Facebook again where the city, city attorney has told us not, not to participate. And then the last, the last sentence says, your lack of respect as well as your insubordination are not acceptable and will not be tolerated. Dot, 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 I expect you will understand that and adjust your behavior accordingly. There was no insubordination. Asking twelve questions or a dozen questions about how an event is, is gonna take place is, is their job responsibility. It's not, the, the fact that they're trying to hold somebody who's holding an event accountable is not insubordination. And if I were Suzie, I probably would have quit and hired a labor attorney. Because that's, that's the second time she's received an, uh, uh, an email that was completely inappropriate.
Okay.
And, and the hypocrisy was, is astounding because you, you harassed our former city administrator about city events.
Okay, all right, please, this,
About city events?
This is E now, well,
At, asking the same kinds of basic questions that she was asking of, of you.
Okay, Bruce.
And, and, yeah, so, you know, Suzie should never have been admonished for this, for, for, for asking these questions and doing her job. You should be admonished for sending an email
Two weeks after it was brought up.
On behalf of the council that you were not authorized to send.
Because we wanted to do something, we wanted to do something for the children in our community. That is who we're here for. We're here for our residents. That seems to be a major issue here. We are not here for our staff. We are here for residents. We can respect our staff, we need to work together, but the residents are at the top of our organizational chart.
So that, that is a perfect segment.
Barb did try to follow the rules and, and
Are you, are you done?
It's just, this is, this is where, and we've talked about this before in the training, understanding the roles and responsibilities of council and staff. There's, city council's responsibility is a policymaking body. They implement the policies, staff executes them. So if, if there's a problem with communication, if there's a problem with the room setup, then council makes the policy and it's the responsibility of staff to execute it. It's not council's responsibility to execute the roles, the functions of staff. So council should never be hosting or organizing events unless it's requested of them by staff. So, and your experience in the school board, Karen, how many times did you actually go in and substitute teach a class? Or did you write a lesson plan? I'm guessing zero.
Substitute, oh, actually, I actually did teach some classes, but
As you're, as a, as a school board, that was part of your responsibility as a school board was to teach class? Or did you hire teachers to do that work? There's, there's a very clear
But things are falling through the cracks.
Well, and, and I don't disagree with that, but that's because, in large part, because council has yet to make the policy, implement the policy decisions to replace the employees that have left. And/or it's the, the negative treatment of the employees that's causing more people to leave. It's, it's a pervasive problem of not knowing the, the roles and responsibilities and the boundaries. This is information that, I mean, MML puts on a training. This is one of the key topics they talk about, duties of city and village officials, right in their training.
Okay, you have the same rules for me as a resident, so, you know.
I mean, I know you tried to work here as a resident and it would have been a little bit different.
I didn't try to work here as a resident. I tried to, I applied for a position when our Parks and Rec department was falling apart as it is right now, so.
Well, we currently don't have a Parks and Recreation either, so.
What's that?
We don't have a Parks and Recreation Director right now. That's another position that needs to be filled.
Recording in progress.
Better wait an hour. Go ahead, I'm sorry.
It just, it's, it, it just comes back to this, and that's why I asked that this council staff relations be put on there. It's very important for council to understand their role and stay within the lanes. I mean, it's not appropriate for council members to be directing the day-to-day operations of the city. I don't care if you're doing it under the guise of it's in the best interest of the residents, the residents are at the top of the organizational chart. Because that's absolutely right. The voters are at the top of any municipal government. The voters control. But they don't control, they didn't elect council to run the city. They elected council to establish the policies that will then guide the staff. The only, the only person that really answers to the council, the only two individuals that answer to the council and the council as a whole are myself as, as the city's attorney and the city administrator. And this situation is different because we have three in their interim. But in a normal, staff would not, would not have any interaction with city, or very little interaction with city council. It would be inappropriate, and this is, this is an issue with, with the former council. And, and I know he's probably on there because I think you referenced him, but I pick on Ian all the time. When Ian first started, understanding that differentiation between his role as a council person, as a resident, and inter, interjecting himself into staff, it took some time for him to get up, up to speed with that. And that's not uncommon for, for people that are new in this position. But it's extremely important, and that's why the, the emphasis on the training and going to the MML training, even for individuals that have been on councils before, it, it's a good refresher to go to. And it's, it's a non-biased, it's a, an organization that, that's all they deal with is municipalities providing information to council members. Jalen had asked me if, if it's something that we could mandate as part of being on council. And, and the more I thought about it, I think it's a really good idea and I think it's something that council should consider.
It's not about training, it's about lack of communication, a lack of access to information. Barb and I are left out of everything. So, um, you know, if you wanna work, work on the communication system and who has access to what, then it's not training.
I think that there was a question to you Monday to ask for you to put together a communication of what you think that, how the communication, uh, plan should go. So we can, you know, we would like to hear your input about
Oh, and a resident directed me to do that, so I'm supposed to do that?
They're the top of the, they're the top of the chart, the pyramid, so they've directed you and asked you. So I'm just, I'm truly just asking, Karen.
Sure, truly, truly, Kelly.
Okay, go back to you now.
The, the issue, I mean, there's so ma, there's so many issues going on. I mean, we talked about this last time. Council should, I mean, there never should have been a FOIA request. I mean, how much time has the staff spent? If you want some information, if you want some relevant information, ask the council.
And what's relevant? And you've told me
Well, things are on the agenda, would be relevant, things that are coming before the city.
You told me that I needed
Stuff that's happened three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, over many years ago, that your request goes back, it's not relevant. If, if council feels that there was, again, and I've, I know I've stated this previously. If council, not a council member, if council feels that there was some sort of misconduct, some employee situation that wasn't handled properly, then council as a whole can direct an investigation. Council can issue subpoenas, require people to appear. They can access any record, any document they want. But it has to come from council, not one individual council member. One individual council member should never be launching their own investigation, contacting former employees, doing things that a council as a whole should be doing, not as an individual. This is, this is, this behavior is, is completely outside the scope and the roles and the responsibilities of the council.
And you sat here a couple of months ago and told me if I wanted employment and personnel information, I had to file a FOIA. That is what you told me.
I, I don't recall telling you you had to file a FOIA. I told you that there's certain information in employee personnel file that is not public and that would have to be redacted. And again, you're, you're criticizing staff for not meeting needs, but then you're putting additional obligations on them and criticizing them for not meeting needs and not meeting the additional obligations. Chastising them and telling them that they're being insubordinate. That's a problem.
And the disrespect is a problem.
Well, it goes both ways.
Yeah, well, it cer, it certainly does. And as far as this previous city administrator, there was a very large issue that was never handled by the city council. The mayor was supposed to take care of it and never did. So, um, that was in minutes and, um, never, never heard a word. So that was allowed to fester for a very long time, so.
Could you please enlighten me on what it was that I did not do?
Excuse me?
Can you please enlighten me on what I was supposed to do?
Yes, I sent a letter to all city council members in December of twenty twenty with multiple issues. And I was not responding to
When was it, in December? So I have all your, um, emails that you requested.
It's not an email, it was a letter that I actually sent to your home and you told me
Oh, I don't know about, I mean, I, okay, I'll have to go look because I am bad with going through my e, uh, my mail that have probably no address on it.
They had an address on it and it's in the minutes that you all discussed it at a city council meeting and it was supposed to be
Okay, what is it that you would like from it? Let's, let's try to resolve it. What would you like from that? So we're done with that, you don't wanna talk about it? No? No?
I'm just explaining the situation.
I'm just asking, like, so we can resolve this, so we can move, we can move forward. Is there some, do you want me to try to find it? You wanna resend it to me and so we can resolve this?
No, I mean, it's
So I'm just asking you, what would you like me to do at this point?
I'm not, didn't ask you to do anything. I just said there are longstanding issues. And there are things that were happening
So what can I do to make them
We can put residents at the top of everything that goes on around here, that's what we can do. That's what you can do.
Okay, so they're, they are, um, considered at the top and they are at the top. What would you like me to do personally at this time to, um, set?
Did I ask you to do anything?
I'm truly asking right now, what would
Truly, you don't have to.
Okay, so then we don't have to talk about that anymore, or do you, I'm just
I'm sorry, every time I have talked about it, it's because someone else brought it up. Mr. Cantor just talked about me running the city administrator out and the things that I did. So I'm sorry, there's a whole story behind all of that. And you had it, uh, in twenty twenty, so.
So we're two years in, and so I just wanna know, what, what can we do right now just to kinda resolve some of this? So, you know, we can just move forward. It's twenty twenty, it's actually almost half It's 2020, it's actually almost halfway through 2022. What can we do to do better council relations? What was your suggestion?
Communicate, have equal access to information, put residents at the top.
Okay, so what does that look like?
And stop bringing up emails and whatever else. That isn't appropriate to to bring personnel issues to a meeting.
If we have, if we, excuse me, I'm sorry.
Did anyone talk to me about it?
If we want to keep the residents or have the residents at the top of our organizational chart, then we would talk about the personnel issue without saying that we're not supposed to really say the the personnel thing, but.
Well, no, you pick what the issue, if you, if, all right, Ms. Steck is going to be subject of discipline potentially, okay? So let's, Ms. Steck, being the subject of the discipline, has the right to request a closed session. All of these types of administrat, again, this would only be for the administrator, but she has the right, she has the right to have representation present. She can request a closed session and we, and it has to, there has to be some sort of communication to her what the disciplinary proceeding would be for. And it it's something that should come from the whole council. I mean, put it on an agenda, talk about it, send a request to the mayor, say, you know what, I felt very disrespected by the interim administrator. I thought she was being insubordinate. This is why I feel that her conduct was inappropriate. I would like to have this brought up amongst council and discuss potential disciplinary action against her for her conduct, not putting it out in an email blasting her and then copying a bunch of other people on it and letting it fester.
Recording in progress.
And then when the meeting comes, not discussing it and just flipping it under the stack of papers and saving it for later on down the road the next time it comes up. I mean, whatever the issues are with Dr. Mitchell, let's get him out, let's resolve it. She's gone, so I can't really see how there'd be any continuing issues with Dr. Mitchell.
Bruce just brought it up. This keeps happening. He brought it, has brought up multiple things. He reads resignation letters. He does these things. I I didn't say anything about it.
I'm not saying, you just said there was an open issue from December of 2020 that's yet to be resolved relating to Dr. Mitchell. Let's resolve it. Let's put it behind us. What what other issues are on the list that that you feel council or former councils have neglected and have not addressed adequately? Instead of just letting that fester and build anger and animosity and derailing the city from moving forward, talk about it. Bring it to everyone's, bring it to the table. I mean, all of this stuff is done in public. There's never going to be a closed venue where the cameras aren't recording, the audience isn't sitting there, where you can feel comfortable about talking about whatever it is you want to talk about. Now, this is the time, well, not really now because we're supposed to be at a meeting, but study session is when you're supposed to have these conversations, is when you're supposed to resolve these issues. It's not supposed, again, it's not supposed to be individual council members on their own crusades trying to torpedo their fellow counselors. And that goes for everybody. I'm not just saying you. I mean, Bruce, Kelly, Jalen, Barb, you should treat everybody equally on this council, regardless of whether you share the same personal viewpoint as them. The personal attacks from all ends need to stop, not just on video, but the stuff that comes through and the emails, it just, the attacks on the staff, it's not a productive environment. You're you're advertising trying to fill two, three crucial positions in the city. I can't tell you how many calls I've received from potential applicants and the first question they say, what the heck is going on in Lathrop Village? They're watching these videos, they're watching these meetings. They're thinking twice whether or not they want to take this position. And now, and that's directly affecting the services and the the quality of life that you're going to provide for your residents.
And what was the reason before?
The reason before for what?
That these things weren't getting done, that residents weren't, weren't included or brought in.
Again, you're talking in in mythical, give me something concrete. What is it that wasn't getting done that the residents were dissatisfied with?
Cannabis, infrastructure, all of those pieces.
That wasn't getting done? I mean, there's a cannabis ordinance on the books.
Right, that that didn't have resident input, yes.
There were, I think, like 27 meetings or something where residents could have had.
Thirty-eight.
Thirty-eight.
Oh, thirty-eight, okay.
I'm sorry, but it's 7:15 and I think we need to.
I agree, I apologize.
We need to end this meeting.
Very frustrating.
We need to go to public comments and then what we can do is if the council agrees to save our comments, our comments until the end of the meetings and, you know, we have 15 minutes, but whatever, what we would like to, because I think Ian, are you still there? Yeah, Ian had something that he wanted to say, but I cannot unmute Ian.
Sorry, everybody, for the technical difficulties. All right, Ian, you should be able to unmute yourself. Can you hear us? You can't hear us. He can't hear us.
Are you going to have any public comments?
That's what we're waiting to, Ian was first to do it. He's online. Ian, and excuse me, Ian, if I say your last name wrong, I know I've said this before, Zitron?
Zitron.
Zitron, he's up first.
I think they're having audio issues. They can't hear anything.
Okay. Well, if you would like to step in until we can get Ian's audio together, if you want to, anyone to speak?
Yeah.
You have to go to the mic.
Ian, you can be on the mic, please.
Karen mentioned quality of life. I hate to say it, I've been a resident here for almost 50 years now in the same house, live right across the street from Bruce and the the city looks like a third world country. The roads are absolutely horrible. Now, we passed a bond issue, I believe, to fix the roads. I hope most of that money is going to go to the roads and not to all sorts of other little dinky stupid stuff. The city, the the state of Michigan's getting $4 billion and they're spending $380 million on the roads. The rest of it, who the hell knows where it's going, okay? Going somewhere, but.
I can tell you.
It's not going to the roads, that's for sure. I know where it's going, you know where it's going, and it is not for infrastructure, okay? It's a political thing. And I've been, I've talked to Bruce about it. The bridge across the expressway, the Lathrop Bridge, looks like an absolute dump and it's looked like a garbage dump for a year. The sewers are all plugged up with stuff. If you have a heavy rain, you're going to have a flood and the more garbage that's there, the more people throw garbage there. I've been trying to get that. I've talked to Kelda, I've talked to everybody about it. Nothing happens. The only debate, whose it is? Well, I talked to Oakland County and they said that bridge belongs to Lathrop. They have to fix it, okay? The lot next to me there on, that I've been talking to Kelda about, the how, the building between Cambridge and and Sunnybrook, that, we battled that guy and that attorney for a long time. I even wrote a letter about the attorney to grievance commission because he accused me of being a racist. But anyway, that place, I've been trying to get that cleaned up. There's garbage all over and on Sunnybrook, there's signs that say no left turn for through traffic and they cut through there and they throw stuff there. And so the Sunnybrook is terrible there and the lot that's between my house and that building is all full of garbage, you know, there's stuff all over there. And and I just want to see the city look, but we've we've been there a long time. We've spent a lot of money on our house over the years. We've won the Christmas decorating contests, all sorts of stuff, and we're not going anywhere, okay? But we don't want to go anywhere, but somebody's got to fix it, okay? Thank you.
Thank you.
Was there anyone else that is in the audience that wanted to speak?
Excuse me, council staff.
You looking in the other room, Scott?
Yes.
Okay.
I have a comparison. I live along Meadow Brook, it's part of my property line, as Bruce knows. And I will go back to 30 years ago or so, council and city wanted to pave the dirt roads. At that time, everybody who lived on a dirt road in Lathrop received a letter of what council had intended to do, but first, they were inviting the residents for an open meeting to discuss the paving and if you like, you could attend and give your pros and your cons to the paving of your roads. That did not happen this time. Just went ahead, made all the plans, it's a done deal. Along Meadow Brook from 11 to Golden Gate, there are 10 residents who back up. 10, that means you need to get six people to want that done. It's a done deal. My husband would say, let them pave it. I say not let them pave it, but it would have been nice, when you first dreamt this up, to inform the residents to come in and discuss it with you. I turned from Southfield onto Golden Gate, Third World. It's horrible and it's unbelievable that a chunk of concrete hasn't come up and hit a windshield or the body of a car and done some serious damage. Thank you.
Thank you. Was there anyone else that wanted to speak? Thank you, Scott.
Hi, my name is Amy Antinen. I wanted to answer councilperson Miller's question earlier. As a resident, I do think it's fiscally irresponsible to spend $30,000 a year to hold these meetings in the community room. Right now, behind me, including myself, there are seven people here sitting, there's empty seats here. Meanwhile, there's about between 20 and 30 people, depending on the timing, viewing this meeting online, so I think it's a waste of money to do that. I also like to ask councilperson Kenez and councilperson Miller if they have time at this meeting or the next one to discuss their plans to attend MLLM training. And I also would like to repeat my request to councilperson Kenez, who's the current recreation liaison, to please call a meeting of the Recreation Advisory Committee, which was established in June of 2019. We have helped run many successful events, including the very popular trivia night, numerous senior seasonal events, park cleanups and more. We had last year been working with city staff to plan a number of events that were advertised in the winter 2022, Your Town, the majority of which unfortunately did not happen as planned. We have been and we are still ready to help with city events and we can help with some things that maybe were an issue for councilperson Kenez and councilperson Miller with the Bunny Breakfast, like advertising, creating and sticking to a budget, making sure safety procedures are being followed, things like that. I just received the most recent Your Town magazine. There are several events that we should really be working on planning and organizing already. You know, another member of the committee and I have both asked councilperson Kenez to please call a meeting and we really hope she does as soon as possible. I also like to request either, again, at this meeting or maybe into the next one or at least sometime soon, update from councilperson Miller to inform residents on the progress she has been making as liaison to the Southfield Public Schools to improve the relationship between Lathrop Village and the school district and to continue programs and grants and things like that that were started in motion last year, like having Southfield Public Schools presence at city events, improving the walkway between the school and the neighborhood and other things like that. My daughter's in her second year at McIntyre Elementary and this issue is very important to my family. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak? Oh, you know, I'm sorry, Ian, can you, can we hear him now?
No, I cannot get the other computer to respond. It is just stuck in, it's just stuck in the cycle. I think I'm going to need to restart it and I can do that for the next one.
Recording in progress.
Let's see, hold on. Ian, can you hear me? This is just, I'm going to put my mic, hold on, hold, hold on, let me put the microphone as soon as I figure out where my speaker is. Don't say anything yet. Okay, test right here? I don't want a speaker. Okay, go ahead.
Okay, good. Oh, thank you very much. Okay, yeah, I want to go back and comment on the breakfast with Bunny, particularly the financing. If I understood correctly, $280 was taken in, the expenditure was $90281, which meant a net loss of $22281, which is best I can tell the city covered. Now, I don't want to prevent anybody from celebrating Easter. However, I don't want my tax dollars to be spent supporting what is essentially a religious celebration. And I say this because, excuse me, the three average religions are simultaneously celebrating Easter, Passover and Ramadan. There is no, there is no Passover bunny. I don't believe there's a Ramadan bunny. I don't think the Buddha cared about bunnies except not to hurt them. It was very clear from the comments on the villagers webpage that people regard, refer to this as an Easter celebration. I'm certainly, under no circumstances would I want to stop anybody celebrating Easter. That's not my point. My point is I don't believe that taxpayer funds should be spent to support such a religious celebration. That's my only comment.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Sir?
My name is Dennis Nordwell. I live at the corner of Cambridge and Lathrop Boulevard. First of all, I'd like to thank the city for working with with our residents and to implement the bond issue in that strip of street that's badly deteriorated and the residents further, as you know, agreed to go along with the special assessment to get the drains rebuilt and the ditches eliminated. We're very happy to see that happen and we noticed that mobilization is taking place this today. The drain materials are on site and a big piece of equipment has been moved in place. I've called to the attention of Mr. Cantor, who is the chair of the Infrastructure Committee, a possible solution for the intersection issues at Lathrop Boulevard and 11 Mile. What we have there is a situation where anybody who wants to go east on 11 Mile or east on the freeway needs to get through the rush hour traffic that's merging off the freeway onto 11 Mile. So you have, in other words, it's a complex situation. 11 Mile traffic is is coming into what becomes the service drive after the stop sign and the traffic off the freeway is coming in at that point. And then, as you can possibly visualize from the map right behind Bruce, then you have people trying to cross Lathrop and there've been a lot of accidents. I used to live at a street corner in an industrial midwestern city where the workers were coming off out of the factory district and there was residential traffic at a main intersection and we had accidents every couple of months. Well, this is bringing back memories of my childhood. And I've seen what happens is that people, residents or others trying to use Lathrop Boulevard, make desperate moves to get across the bridge and sometimes it works and sometimes it doesn't. I did come across a similar intersection in Farmington. My father-in-law lives over there and on 9 Mile Road, where the freeway exits onto 9 Mile Road, the southbound freeway, which is Grand River 5. where the freeway exits onto 9 Mile Road, the southbound freeway, which is Grand River 5, I think, at that point.
Sorry, Mr., uh, am I saying Norton?
Yes.
Okay, your time is up. Um, what we can do is that when we get to our meeting, if you would like to continue at that time during public comment.
Sure, has this been discussion, or what? Is, you were saying a regular meeting?
So this has been our study session, where we don't make, uh, we don't do any action items at this time? That this is just kind of talking through what is on the agenda, or talking whatever the council could.
Thank you, I appreciate that. Uh, I thought it was coming up tonight, and I thought, whoa, the meeting's ended, so.
Based on what you said to me, I, I made copies from, because I was going to talk about it at the end of the, end of the meeting. So I'll bring it up again at the council comments at the end of the next meeting.
So, um, I'm going to adjourn the meeting, and, uh, so we can jump into the, excuse me, adjourn the study session, so we can jump into the meeting.